Like to welcome everybody to our council meeting tonight. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to lead us in our prayer, and right from my prayer, we'll go right into the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please stand. Ms. Broughton, call roll, please.
Councilman Boozer?
Here.
President Logan?
Here.
Councilman Sullivan?
Here.
Councilman Davis?
Here.
Councilman Hogg?
Here.
We have a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. Item four, our mayor's office has a proclamation for schoolyard roots.
Whereas the schoolyard roots project is striving to cultivate a better food system, and whereas the schoolyard roots project builds vegetable gardens in elementary school to educate both teachers and students with hands-on learning experiences by planting, growing, and distributing produce. And whereas the goal of the schoolyard roots project is to create a network of school gardens that will build healthier communities, engage students in learning, and increase access to healthy, sustainably grown food. And whereas currently Crestline Elementary, Flatwoods Elementary, and Fawcett Vestavia Elementary Schools are successfully participating in this program. And whereas the schoolyard roots project promotes a healthy lifestyle, teaches students that rewards can come from diligent efforts, and equips students with a foundation that will set them up for healthy and successful lives. Now therefore, I, Donna Aaron, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Northport, Alabama, do hereby proclaim July the 24th, 2017, to be School Yard Roots Day in the city of Northport, and express our appreciation for the contributions to the quality of life and well-being of our citizens. And I will say that I have visited the gardens at Flatwoods and at Vestavia, and they are truly unique, and I'm very impressed with what y'all have done and what those children do. It's really been great for our community. In fact, you said very much. Thank you, y'all.
There's nothing much more I can say than that beautiful declaration. We appreciate the opportunity to be here and to serve in the Northport schools and the Tuscaloosa County school system. I, as the executive director of the organization, can only tell you facts and figures, so that's not interesting to anyone. So what I've done with me today is brought two of our program participants who can give you their firsthand experience of the program that we are celebrating today. I'd like to introduce Sam, who is a fourth grade student at Flatwoods Elementary, and his mother, who is a second grade teacher at Flatwoods. So Sam, welcome. Come on up.
My name is Sam Datter. I go to Flatwoods Elementary. Last year, I was in the fourth grade. My favorite activity was helping my class make a garden salad. One group cut up radishes. We used lettuce from our garden. One group grated Parmesan cheese. Another group made the dressing. Then we ate it, and it was delicious. Thank you for supporting our school. And here's the recipe for the salad we got to take at home. And thank you.
And I too have note cards because I do not like public speaking. My name is Karen Dagard, and I teach second grade at Flatwoods. I want to say thank you for supporting our garden. There's many, many reasons why we as teachers and students love it. I have a few reasons. I could go on and on. But I feel like it's something that, you know, we all have in common at the school. Everybody from grades K through five participates, including the faculty and staff. So it kind of unifies us, brings it all together. It's also a way to get kids excited about being outdoors, being active, but also being productive. You know, they participate in the planting of seeds, watering, weeding, spraying the organic pesticides when needed, harvesting the vegetables. And then they also participate, like my son had mentioned, in preparing food that they can sample. And vegetables have never been so tasty and well-eaten by children. We also have farm stands that occur a couple of times a year where, once we harvest the vegetables, students help to run the farm stand, so they're selling to customers. And then the customers, of course, are the parents and students connected to the school. So that always is very popular as well. And then, of course, as teachers, we're interested in, okay, what is this teaching as far as, you know, the subjects, the standards? And it really focuses on having the children, you know, read, write, do math and science. Just a few things, examples that I have. We take kids on a scavenger hunt in the garden. They're looking for shapes, insects, earthworms, labels, scents. You know, they're really putting their five senses to work in doing this. We measure the plants, record our measurements, check back at a later time, measure our plants, you know, check for their growth. We count the different types of plants. We come, you know, and then we graph that information, which is, of course, an important math skill in science as well. Then, as my son mentioned, we harvest the vegetables, prepare them. So we used this year strawberries for fruit smoothies. They sampled mustard greens and collard greens with a lemon vinaigrette, which they all just loved. You know, which is unusual for a child to love mustard greens and collard greens raw. Let's see, another big hit was the stir-fried snow peas that were prepared. And this is all with student participation. They're participating in picking the vegetables, washing the vegetables, you know, cutting them up, mixing up the vinaigrette. And then, of course, they get to eat the vegetables and, you know, take the vegetables home at times. So, you know, it really encourages children to try different vegetables, to eat their vegetables. And like I said, I could, you know, with many, many other reasons why we love our garden, but I will stop here and say, you know, thank you very much to Northport for supporting this outdoor classroom for us.
Item five is approval of the agenda. In our pre-meeting, there was an addition labeled item 8C14. It's a PO requisition for the Union Chapel Road Highway 69 realignment project. It's the right-of-way appraisals in that process. That's through BKI, the Design Engineering Team, a firm that was hired. Again, the dollar amount is $14,500. This is in addition to the agenda. And again, as a point of reference, that $14,500, ladies and gentlemen, is reimbursable by the Tuscaloosa County Road Improvement Commission. So that portion of, or the city's portion of this will be reimbursable by the TCRIC. So with that being said, I'll make that in the form of a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of item 8C14, which is the PO requisition as previously stated. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hogg? Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Ms. Broughton.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Councilman Boozer?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item six is visitors to address our council. Ms. Jessica Beckwith with People First.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Jessica. It's like Jay Logan just said. I'm with People First of Alabama, Tuscaloosa Chapter, and we are an organization that helps individuals with intellectual disabilities. Part of the organization, we teach people how to advocate for themselves. And tonight, some of our individuals are running a little late, so they're not here. But we are teaching them, teaching the individuals that the city also has issues and concerns that they have to resolve. So we here tonight just to see what issues that you all have and how you all resolve them. So hopefully they'll be here soon.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for what you do. Item 8A1 under New Businesses, a first reading of an ordinance amending the Northport City Code pertaining to interest and delivery licenses. Ms. Hoffman, this is a opportunity for the city to look at mirroring the state code regarding interest and delivery licenses. All right. And Ron, y'all guys, help me out. This is mirroring the state code 2015-415. On the interest part of it, it changes the rate of interest from 12% to 4% per quarter. Am I saying that right? Okay. And this was signed recently by the governor's office, I guess?
May 26th.
Okay.
Goes into effect on August 1st. We'd ask you to consider suspending the rules. All this will do is make our city code consistent with state law.
All right. And then the delivery part of the license, meaning if I don't have a brick and mortar business, how's that affect me? Meaning?
If you deliver into the city limits or police jurisdiction, as long as you don't sell more than $10,000 worth, you do not have to purchase a delivery license.
And again, being consistent with state code?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So first action, we have to suspend the rules in order to immediately consider it because it's time-sensitive. So is there a motion to suspend the rules to immediately consider amending the city code pertaining to interest and delivery licenses?
Move to suspend.
That's a motion by Councilman Sullivan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Ms. Broughton.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Boozer?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. Under suspension of rules, again, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance amending the Northport City Code pertaining to interest and delivery tax within the city of Northport? I'll make that motion, President Logan. That's a motion by Councilman Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Boozer? Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Ms. Broughton.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Boozer?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. Next item is 8B1, is a resolution authorizing an agreement between the city of Northport Fire Rescue and Physio Control for extended service of Life PAC 15. Chief Marshall.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. This is for consent item 8C10. It's for the Life PAC, and the request for this resolution, if we add it now, we get a 15% cost savings, which is about $900 over the term, and after purchase, the agreement at the time of sale.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to adopt that resolution authorizing our city administrator's office to enter into an agreement between the city, Fire Rescue, and Physio Control Incorporated for the extended service of Life PAC 15, and authorize our city administrator to execute the documents and requisitions pertaining to said agreement?
A move.
That's a motion by Councilman Boozer. That's a second by Councilman Davis. Is that right? I'm sorry, Councilman Hogg. So that's a motion by Councilman Boozer, second by Councilman Hogg. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Ms. Broughton.
Councilman Boozer?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item two is a resolution declaring certain items as surplus and authorizing a proper disposal. Ms. Starnes.
Yes, sir. This is one office printer and two shredders.
All right. I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution declaring those items surplus and authorizing a proper disposal. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Ms. Broughton.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Boozer?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item C is our consent agenda. Again, items 1 through 14. They range from minutes of the previous meeting, bill listings, PO requisition, travel and training. And of course, the PO number 14 was the Union Chapel Road 69 realignment. Again, for the right-of-way appraisals. This is through BKI's office. And again, as I said earlier, the $14,500 is a reimbursable amount by the TCRIC or the Tuscaloosa County Road Improvement Commission. That's basically the city's portion that will be reimbursed. Again, these are 14 items. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed? I'll make that in the form of a motion. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Ms. Broughton.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Boozer?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. Item nine is reports of special committees to council. We have one on the agenda out of our finance committee. Councilman Sullivan?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. As you all are aware, when we began the budget process with the finance committee, it all seemed pretty obvious that everybody wanted to look at the city's banking services. So here's what we've kind of done up till this point before we make a motion is we've put out some requests for proposals to all banks within the city of Northport. We then, everybody that replied back, finance committee met along with administrator with each one for a great deal of time. We then narrowed down the top two, re-interviewed again to come up with a selection for the banking services for the city. So at this time, I would like to make a motion to adopt the resolution selecting BBVA Compass for banking services for the city of Northport, and authorize the city administrator and director of finance to proceed as necessary to complete this change.
All right, that's in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis. Any questions or comments?
I will say the first step, if this is approved, we'll be meeting with them and creating a transition plan. We'll certainly get that to everybody as soon as we can. I think best guess is six to eight months for this change to happen. So please bear with us, and I'll keep everybody updated as we go forward.
Thank you. Motion in a second, motion by Councilman Sullivan, second by Councilman Davis. Any further questions or comments? Hearing now, Ms. Broughton.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Boozer?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item 10 is public hearings. We have none on the agenda tonight. Item 11, city administrator's business. I know Bruce is in Greenville, South Carolina, representing the city. So, Ms. Kim, I didn't know if you had any business, if you wanted to change the meeting times or if you wanted to... Okay, now's your point. You're running the show. Okay, all right. Item 12 is departmental business. Legal Department, we have one claim. That's claim number 17-16. Ron, if you give us a brief synopsis, please.
Yes, Mr. President. This is a claim for a damaged vehicle in the amount of $1,370.35. The vehicle was parked at or near Dreamland on March the 24th. As you'll recall, there was an incident with an armed suspect, and several Northport police officers and county deputies were called out. Luckily, no one was harmed, and they were able to apprehend the suspect. But during the incident, this vehicle was scratched by one of the law enforcement officers, and it was reported to the Chief Burton that night. And so we recommend that this claim be paid.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the claim at the recommendation of the Claims Committee in the amount of $1,370.35?
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
That's a motion by Councilman Sullivan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Boozer? Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Ms. Broughton.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Boozer?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item 13 is public comment. We have two citizens signed to speak. Our first one is Tony Roberts. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Thank you for coming. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Tony Roberts. I live at 5109 Oakway. And by the expression on Mr. Davis's face, I'm not here to rehash the previous zoning and planning committee issues.
I'm just glad to have you.
I understand. But one of the things that I did do, and I have talked to the mayor and several others, is that, you know, discuss exactly what does the city of Northport envision for ourselves? And one of the items that I challenged the planning zoning committee on is what do we really want our town to look like? Mr. Stevens isn't here. I guess he's on vacation. But he's been very helpful in understanding a great deal of what went into the zoning articles that the city has on the books. And to keep this brief, I actually wrote my notes out, so... My understanding is in 2012, there was a large rewrite of the articles for the city for the zoning purposes. I don't know how many of you were here, but I understand that was a very large undertaking. There was a lot of the language that was changed in the articles as written. Much of that language that was included was to protect the environment for the area that was already in the city, and also for those that were looking to annex into the city. One change that specifically was addressed is on smaller lot subdivisions by way of green spaces, buffer zones, and other ways to protect the natural part of our town. The language in Article 5 actually specifically addresses quality of life, protect public's health, safety, welfare, preserve and protect community character. This is an issue that's ongoing in the U.S. where we have cities that are paving over every single blade of grass and mowing every tree in the hope of building more houses and shopping areas. And I think we can all agree that we have enough title loans and nail salons around the country. We don't need more. As written, RS 9 and below contained a provision that 20% of that land be set aside for public space. And that basically says if I have 50 acres, 10 of those acres are going to be some kind of public green space. And the green spaces are defined in Article 4, and I'm not going to read all of those. But there's a caveat in there that says that only if that zoning includes lots, a lot that is less than 9,000 square feet. That means that a builder can request RS 9, take advantage of already minimal offsets, set forth in Article 6, but then have every lot at 9,001 square feet, and they don't have to set aside a single piece of land for open space. I realize you got to have a rule. You got to have a firm line of where you are, and you can't have gray areas. But, I mean, really, you can't write rules that are easily circumvented in this nature because as far as I'm concerned, in the military, they call it technically correct and prudently wrong. Okay? That's exactly what's going on with the articles. To add further injury to these articles, there is the ability to request a variance that even allows a further circumvention of what your articles already state. You can have an RS 9 subdivision, subdivide in very narrow lots that meet the minimum requirement, be 9,001 square feet, but then request variances on offsets, which means I get to build the biggest house I can on the smallest piece of property, and it's legal. You guys can approve it. And the bottom line is you get high-density neighborhoods jammed together with no green spaces, which I don't believe is the spirit of the way the article was rewritten. Variances according to Chapter 62 of the Planning and Zoning are specific cases that will not be contrary to public interest, or literal enforcement would result in a specific hardship. Now, I'm not sure what comes first, public interest or, quite frankly, the hardship of it costing a company another dollar to put something in. But, I mean, what do we really want to do here? I mean, are we way too lenient on these hardship cases? Now, I understand that it's way easy to say, well, in the past, we've already done this. But at some point, you have to draw a line. At some point moving forward, you have to decide what you want in this community and what you don't want in the community. I'm sure the engineering department doesn't really need to look at how many sidewalk variances that are requested here under the assumption that it costs a little bit of money. If you drive all over the country, the subdivisions go in with the sidewalk there, and quite frankly, replacing a sidewalk is far less costly than the builders would have you believe. One busted piece of concrete is probably $35 or $40 in a couple of hours. But yet, every single meeting minute that I looked at over the last couple of years, and believe me, I was bored enough to go through all of the meeting minutes that are there, sidewalks, gutters, and offsets. The city of Northport, the Planning and Zoning Commission, is allowing a bad situation to continually roll over year after year. And it really needs to stop. I realize the zoning commission is a committee, but you guys, this is where it stops right here. Some decision has to be made with what's going on there. My wife and I have lived all over the country. We were both military dependents. We both lived overseas. We've lived in big cities. We've lived in small cities. For the record, neither one of us are Bama fans, okay? So moving to Tuscaloosa area was...
Strike that from the record.
Yeah. I'm one of the few people that doesn't need an interpreter for Ed Ogeron, so just saying. So when we looked at where we wanted to live, and I've been in the automotive industry for 28 years, Northport offered one of the few opportunities to be near everything we like, the beach, the mountains, big cities, small cities. And the city of Northport was actually pointed out to me. And when we got to drive around, we just love the character of the city. We love what it is. You have the added benefit of being near a community, but you're far enough out that you don't have to be around people. And I just can't believe that the city of Northport envisioned a circumvention of the articles when they decided to rewrite this in 2012. I would really urge the city council, the engineering department, the planning and zoning team, and I really mean a team, okay? No one person can operate in a vacuum. You really have to decide, do you really want your ordinances, codes, and articles sidestep so easily so someone can make an extra dollar or it costs them a dollar less to do it? Or do we want a community that we could all choose to live in, God willing, for a long time, that preserves this really unique, special area? And for those of you who have never traveled outside the area, I don't really believe you understand what kind of a special area Northport is compared to some of the other places that I've lived in this country. So I appreciate your time, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts.
Appreciate that. Hey, real quick. First off, thank you for all your homework. You're dead on on a lot of those issues. And I appreciate that as a member of that board. This is something we've been fighting for years. Is the book correct? No. A lot of areas of the book are not. It's very difficult to go back through and change. And we've had several meetings over and over and over with residents, developers, trying to create a better dialogue because, no, we do not like RS 9 because, that's exactly right. It does not require green space. They don't have to put a playground, a pool, anything, and that's what we're trying to avoid. We want that. The nine-member commission is very much in favor of those things. We're also in favor of larger lots. There's a fine line there to, you know, where can we draw that line to say this is what you can and can't do as a property owner, you know, coming to us? Yes, you hear the word "cost" thrown out there a lot, but this board cannot take that into consideration. It doesn't matter that the burden is on the developer. We have to look at it from a homeowner's standpoint, the taxpayer, the voter.
Well, the only thing I would add is that the courts have upheld since 1940 that cities and towns have the right and the ability to write these rules and laws in.
Absolutely.
Okay? And that, for me, is where it's got to start. I realize what the citizens and the builders want, but really, you guys have the ability. You have the legal right to do so, and I would encourage you to take a look and stop the loopholes. Because quite frankly, if the exceptions become the rules, we no longer need any rules.
Or no longer need a board. That's a very good point. I appreciate your homework on that very much.
Our second citizen signed to speak is Mr. Steven Schwab. Thank you, Mr. Schwab. Please state your name and address for the record.
Steven Schwab, 2525th Street in Northport. I've been thinking for some time about the fact that we live in a tornado-prone area, what I used to call Tornado Alley. And of course, I was here in 2011 in April when a tornado really did considerable devastation in Tuscaloosa, but missed Northport, thankfully. And so I was thinking about joining or participating in some kind of emergency training, which I think is useful for a number of reasons. For people in neighborhoods to be able to identify first responders because they know them, to know who knows first aid, who knows how to remove down power lines successfully. Because sooner or later, we will be whacked by a tornado. That's a given. And so I was talking to Chief Burton several weeks ago, and he told me that there is training. It's available. It's called the Civilian Emergency Response Team. And I'm going, my wife and I are going to participate in the training, which I think is a couple of weekends. It starts on August, Saturday, August 27th. You can check it out online. I really thought I maybe should... I really thought I maybe should just call your attention to that and the community's attention to it. I'm sorry, I don't have more details with me, but it is online, and I would encourage people to think about joining me and my wife in this training. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwab. Item fourteen is mayor and councilmember's business. I'll start with District One, Councilman Boozer.
Nothing at this time.
All right. I will say, Councilman Boozer, you've got a meet and greet after this thing is concluded. So District One residents, come meet your councilman, talk to him, work on ideas and opportunities. Under my business, I had one item in our pre-meeting that I wanted to kind of clean up. I know with Councilman Boozer coming online, and we really appreciate him filling in, you know, our work colleague, Councilman Hambricht passing away, he's going to fill in for him and do a great job. We know, with that being said, we've got some committee reappointments to address. And in our pre-meeting, we wanted to put Councilman Sullivan on all of them to keep him busy, but we just, we want to stick him on finance. So if it pleases mayor and council, I'll go through it, Ron. I'll do the appointments, co, excuse me, chair, co-chair, and alternate, because some of the meetings, ladies and gentlemen, maybe during the morning time, you may have a councilman who can't attend the chair, maybe the co-chair, but we've got an alternate that'll definitely attend. And we've got five committees. There are finance, which deals with the money, projects, which is public works, engineering, water, sewer, storm, external bid processes and projects, and internal admin deals with property, real estate, right-of-way, insurance, some form of litigation if it's not triggered through any kind of executive session, as well as pay plan, issues in personnel. So that's admin. Retail development, this one's a little bit more, I won't say dark horse, but it does deal with the retail recruitment aspect of it. A lot of it is confidential, maybe some confidentiality agreements need to be signed before large projects are being put for any kind of vote, so you may not hear a lot of it until it actually happens. Public safety, of course, is what it is, police, fire, public, our citizens who participate in that public safety aspect as well. So I'll get right into it. Our finance committee will not change. The chair is Councilman Sullivan, co-chair is Councilman Logan, with an alternate, Councilman Boozer's our alternate. The projects committee, our chair is Councilman Davis, co-chair Councilman Logan, alternate Councilman Hogg. The admin committee, chair is Councilman Boozer, co-chair is Councilman Sullivan, alternate Councilman Davis. Retail development committee, chair is Councilman Hogg, co-chair is Councilman Logan, alternate is Councilman Boozer. Public safety, chair is Councilman Davis, co-chair is Councilman Boozer, and alternate is Councilman Sullivan. And Ron, again, the purpose and responsibilities of each committee are, they'll be attached in an addendum in the agenda, but I want to make sure that that's in the form of a motion to utilize and revamp our committees with the addition of Councilman Boozer as stated. So that's in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis. Any questions or comments? Hearing now Ms. Broughton.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Boozer.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. One more item under my business. Terry, I see you in the audience. We'll call you out right now.